And I'm going to launch the Select Board meeting of September 22nd, executive session beginning at 6:30, open session beginning at 7:15. So if I could have the town administrator read the agenda. And unmute yourself before you read it.
Good evening. So tonight's executive session discussion is regarding the library to discuss strategy with respect to threaten potential litigation if the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board in town and the chair does so declare to discuss the matter of five star building corp versus the town of Sherburne pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A, 3 and 7, and construction, suburb construction versus DKM 449 Mass 444 (2007).
Thank you Diane, and I do so declare that executive session is needed. So I need a second and a roll call move.
Second.
Okay, Eric?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am as well, there's Marion's there, Marion?
Hi.
And I am I as well, and George, just so you know, George is on the road and he's going to join us at 6:45. So now I'm going to, we're in executive session.
So I'm now opening the open session of the Select Board meeting on September 22nd. We're targeted open at 7:15 and at 7:18, so we're way better than we usually are. And so the recording is on, and I'd like to ask the town administrator to read the open session agenda for us, please, too. And unmute yourself first.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the Select Board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. There is a public comment section, but I haven't been notified by anybody that would like to speak tonight. Items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated 40 hours in advance may be added. Item number one is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant for the interim TA. Our next meeting is October 6th. Item number two is the MBTA Communities Update. Gino Calucci will be here tonight to review everything with the Select Board. There is an update on the Farm Pond Water Quality Metrics and Catherine Rokeo from the Farm Pond Advisory Committee will be here. There was a discussion and a vote on early voting hours that Jackie Morris, the town clerk, will bring forward. Consideration acceptance of an EEOA Formula Grant and Springwell Grant from Sue Kelleher, our COA Director. Consideration of acceptance of a gift from Youth Lacrosse, Dave Goldberg, Chair of the Recreation, and consideration of a gift from Roach Brothers and a gift from local town pages printing for our Veterans Day celebration, and I'll be bringing that forward. And then the last item is consideration of routine business Select Board reports. The Select Board will then go into their second executive session. And that meeting will be with Town Council to prepare for contract negotiations with non-bargaining employees pursuant to General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A, 2 and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus DKM 449 Mass 444 (2007) for the town administrator.
Thank you Diane. Do I have any recommended revisions or to the agenda or items not anticipated?
I'd like to propose somewhere that we discuss the possibility of a executive session for the Sherburne Community Foundation, please.
Okay, you mentioned that in an email earlier. Would that be appropriate for Select Board updates?
I think he wants executive session, though.
Yeah, but.
No, no, but we could do it in the, we could do it in the Select Board reports. We can make a decision on when we want to have a meeting for that. Okay.
I think we can, although I guess Eric, you usually encourage us not to vote in on Select Board reports.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to vote. We can just kind of decide on a date. And that when it comes to scheduling, you don't have to vote to put something on the schedule.
I think that's right. Is that okay with you, Paul?
Yep.
Okay, do I have a motion with respect to the agenda?
With approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Do I have a motion with respect to the consent agenda?
With approval.
Second.
Excellent. Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. So the consent agenda is approved and will.
Trying to move through this fast, Jeff, so you can keep your voice.
By the way, I have a terrible cold, everybody. It was Europe all last weekend. It's not COVID. I just have a terrible cold.
My family had it.
So Chris Owen and Gino are going to talk about MBTA Communities next.
Great, thank you. If I can share my screen. Okay, starting with some background, you may remember, but for people who are not aware, in January of 2021, the legislature passed the Housing Choice Legislation of which, in response to the housing crisis, one part of that legislation was a new Section 3A of Chapter 40A, which is the zoning statute, which requires multifamily housing by right must be of reasonable size within a half mile of transit and a gross density of 15 units per acre. And they charged the Department of Housing and Community Development to come up with guidelines to determine compliance. So earlier in the year, the draft guidelines came out and they called, they defined reasonable size as 50 acres. 15 units per acre, with 50 acres as a minimum required at least 750 units or 10% of the existing housing stock, whichever was greater. And units had to be suitable for families, no age restriction and no affordability. If there wasn't a transit station in town and it had to be near the town center, district could be split, but at least one had to be 25 acres minimum and no sub-district could be less than five. And failure to comply would result in, at a minimum, loss of these three grants listed on the screen. And, and by the way, it isn't like, for example, open space and recreation plans are prerequisite for qualification to to be granted certain grant programs. But if you don't have an open space and recreation plan, that's fine. You just can't apply for the grants. This is a law that towns are expected to comply with. And from what I'm understanding, there probably will be additional penalties beyond the loss of these grants. So in August, on August 10th, DHCD came up with final guidelines. They held a webinar on September 8th to explain them. And Planning Board reviewed them kind of briefly two nights ago. And there are significant changes from the original draft, especially as it pertains to Sherburne. So the major changes affecting Sherburne, a new category was created. The original guidelines had three categories. They had rules for if you had a subway stop, different rules if you had a commuter rail. And the third category was if you were an adjacent community to commuter rail. They now created a fourth category called adjacent small towns, which Sherburne falls into. And so for those, for that category, the minimum unit capacity is now 5% of the 2020 Census units, which, which is 78 for Sherburne, whereas previously the minimum was 750 under the original guidelines. There's no longer a minimum land area for adjacent small towns, so it's not 50 acres. And it was clarified that this is for zoning, but projects must still comply with Title V in the Wetlands Protection Act, even if that means the resulting project will be less dense than 15 units per acre. Also, there's no restriction on the location of the district. It can be anywhere in town. Other changes affecting Sherburne are that the maximum allowed affordable units in a multifamily district is 10%. Or if it's a 40R district or similar incentive program approved by DHCD, it can be as much as 20%. So it can't be 25%, which would, for rental program, would result in 100% of the units counting on the SHI. However, there is another category I haven't listed there, and that's if you have a pre-existing zoning requirement for affordable housing that predates Section 3A, such as we have a 15% minimum that was adopted prior to 3A. It appears that that would still apply. Again, the unit capacity does not need to account for water or wastewater infrastructure. Sub-districts are allowed with different density requirements, as long as the total equals 15 per acre. And then the, as part of the process, an action plan is due to be submitted to DHCD by January 31st, 2023. That action plan consists of a form, an online form that you fill out. And the substance of it is basically a schedule of how you're going to approach this. And then final compliance with the guidelines are due December 31st, 2025. And whereas previously, in the original guidelines, DHCD had said you have to adopt the zoning first and then submit it, and we'll tell you if it's, if it's good enough. But now they've agreed that they will give you an opinion prior to taking a vote at town meeting. So the next steps for us would be for us to submit the action plan by January 31st. And that would retain interim compliance, so we would be still eligible for those grants as long as we submit that action plan. We also can apply for grants and technical assistance to help us create a district and/or adopt a district. So the action plan, as I said, it's basically a schedule for a public outreach program, developing the zoning itself, applying DHCD's compliance model to test for density and unit capacity. They've created this, this model that's both a spreadsheet and a GIS map that they will, they will supply us with. And that, that, that would be used to, you know, according to their standards, that we meet the density requirements. And then holding public planning board hearings on the zoning article and holding the town meeting to adopt compliant zoning, and then finally submit that adopted zoning to DHCD. Among the potential grants and technical assistance that could be available are the Community One Start for Growth Grants, Housing Choice Community Grants, which we have gotten a Housing Choice Grant in the past, Energy and Environmental Affairs Land Use Grants, Mass Housing has free technical assistance. MAPC also has their District Local Technical Assistance Program that could be available for this. There also, besides the webinar that was already held on December 8th, there are a whole series of other webinars on this program sponsored by CHAPA, Mass Housing Partnership, and the Massachusetts Chapter of American Planning Association. So that is it, and Chris is now going to talk a little bit about the schedule.
Okay, so, thank you, Gino. So this is what we're hoping on doing. So it was actually September 8th, not December 8th. We just had the webinar like two weeks ago. So the planning board's hoping on doing, or what we're planning on doing is in the next month or so, we're going to look at this and we're going to develop a plan. We would like to submit that plan to the Select Board in November. And that way, if with, I mean, we don't need your approval, but we want your approval. We need the town to buy into however, whatever approach we take. Then we're going to submit to DHCD for review in December. And then if they approve what our plan, then we'll submit an action plan by January 23. And then we will schedule town-wide presentations and public outreach. And then after that will be planning board hearings with anticipation of bringing it to town meeting 2024. And that gives us, if we, if we have a problem, because again, this is, it still has to pass town meeting. That gives us 2025 if needed to tweak this and get it passed by December 31st, 2025. So that's sort of our plan. That's our timeline. And I don't want to get into the details of it, but if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to field them.
I have some.
Go ahead, Paul. Thank you, by the way, Chris and Gino.
Yep.
So the first is that, that January 2023 may sound like a long time away, but it's actually only three to four months away.
Correct.
In September, heading into October. And so I gather from what you're saying, that Planning Board is committed to do the work to prepare this on time to get it filed by the end of January.
Um, this, this just came out less than a month ago and the webinar was two weeks ago. So yes, every town is scrambling and we will, we will have it done. And you will have time to look at it in November, so we can submit it to DHCD by December. And again, it's going to be tweaked. There's going to be changes made. We still have several years, but, but the action plan has to be submitted by January 31st, 23, correct?
Yeah, just to be clear, it's not the zoning, the zoning district that has to be submitted, just the schedule for how we're planning it all out. That, that's all. It's an online form. It's not, you know, it's, it should not be a problem to be able to submit it by January 31st.
As a follow-up question, there are going to be some hard choices with the, even with these improvements. And I'd point out that the only environmental waiver, if you will, maybe that's the wrong word, is for Title V and, and the state wetlands law, not our local water health regulations that have helped preserve the environment in the town. Those do not count here. And the second is the, the location of this district, while it can be anywhere in the town, there's going to be a problem, I think, with voters if we try to put it on top of their property. Because what, what voter is going to want this affecting their own property? Which leads me to town meeting. The way I read the changes to the quantum of vote, that this will only take a majority vote to pass.
Correct.
Thing.
Yep.
But the caveat here is what happens if the voters say no?
Um, well, my feeling is we'll worry about that when we have to. It's going to be our job for public outreach. It's going to be our job to pitch it. It's going to be our job, and that's why I was also shooting for town meeting of 2024. And so it gives us another shot if we, if we need it.
Okay.
Right, Gino, thanks for the really good summary. Gino and I, I should say, had a discussion, just because, an interesting discussion about whether somehow this overlay district could be overlaid, overlaid on a property that was already destined for a 40B affordable housing. And, you know, I, Gino, I must say, I, I read through this again and again, and I think it's pretty clear that the state will not let that happen. I think, the way I read this, the state is looking for multi-unit housing separate from elderly housing certainly, but also separate from 40B. They, they want to get the bang for the buck through both, through both venues without any overlap. Is that how you're reading it now, too? I mean, they want both the 40B requirement and the DHCD, and they don't want them to overlap.
Uh, I believe that's true, but I don't think there's a prohibition on overlap. For example, if we created a district and then somebody proposed a 40B on it, it would be no different than any other 40B that, that overrides the local zoning. But, but the problem there is with a density of 15 units per acre, why would you bother with a 40B? They require 25% affordable.
And, and once you built the housing, it wouldn't qualify under the MBTA Communities Act because it's more than 20% affordable.
Yeah, no, but it doesn't matter. It's, it's, this is a zoning pro-program. As long as we adopt the zoning, whatever gets built, gets built. It could be a single-family house. It would still comply.
But it says it must permit 15 units per acre as of rights.
Exactly. As long as the zoning permits that, we're in compliance. It doesn't have to be built that way.
Okay, I, I would like to, I would like to make sure we're not, you know, we don't misread that and get.
Marion, we'll be very careful, believe me.
Yeah, okay, great.
When, when we come back in, in November, we will have outlined all of these concerns. So if anyone has any concerns, forward them to Gino. We will take care of it. I promise you.
I believe you, but I'll let Eric ask his question, too.
Honestly, I have, I have too many questions part of this meeting. I definitely got to take this offline. I guess I'll ask just, you know, one basic, simple question, which comes to me, is, you know, I talked about, of course, I have to comply with Title V and the wetlands regulations. Why did I call out those two versus the countless other regulations that affect development, like DEP's water supply regulations? Are those, because those are statutes in addition to regulations, where the water supply is just based on regulations? I mean, there's, there's many, many things that affect density of development, more than just those two. And I wonder if those two were specifically called out or you're using them as examples, or, you know, are they going to be precluded from DEP's water supply regulations?
I can answer that if you want.
Sure.
So most communities have adopted considerable overlay on top of the State Wetlands Act and also on this Title V. That hasn't been the case with regard to DEP's water supply rules. So I think what they're targeting was sort of the low-hanging fruit, the, the big issues that have been blocking development.
Okay.
Marion, are you, you have another question? Marion, is your hand just still up?
I, I just had a comment on that, but.
Go ahead quickly, then Darryl has the question.
Oh, right. Elsewhere, they do point out that, that a town can limit housing or not, not allow multi-unit housing even in the town's extended buffer district. There is a little, a little environmental protection there that I think I saw. But, so I think there's a little more than just the wetland and the buffer zone.
Good. Darryl?
Hi. Did they mention at any point the how they're dealing with the conflict between 15 units per acre? You can't even have 15 one-bedroom units per acre for Title V. So I'm just curious, it just, it's such a clash between those. Have they mentioned that at all on how they see the workaround for that?
Yes, they, as they said, they've clarified that, that Title V still applies. This is about zoning.
Oh, so you can zone it, and if technology changes in the future, that would enable that, then, okay, got it, got it.
So just so I understand, you know, that if a district has to be less than 15 units per acre because of Title V regulations, the district simply has to be larger because we still need 78 units. Is that correct?
No, no, it's not. There's no minimum land area for adjacent small towns. And again, as long as the zoning allows 15 units per acre, what gets built is not, does not affect it. We're in compliance.
So that means that actually we don't have to build 75, 78 units?
No, we just have to zone for it.
Okay. That clarifies it. Thanks.
It leaves it to the private developers to figure out a way to put like a package treatment plant in there that will serve 30 buildings.
Right.
Okay, does anyone else have the questions for the planning board? All right. Thank you again. You did a great job and we're glad you're on top of it, Chris.
We'll see you in November.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm confident. So, so our next topic, agenda item is an update on Farm Pond Water Quality from Catherine.
Hello, Catherine Rocky, 60 Harrington Ridge. So I wanted to come to talk to you guys tonight. I come in May and told you what the Farm Pond Advisory Committee was doing. And then I, I wanted to come back to you to explain some data that we've been observing. Out of this data, I wrote a letter or notification to Farm Pond Butters. I shared that with you guys in the Slack board, and I also put it on the town news. And I would have put it in a next door if I could have figured out how to make my own account, but I haven't, I mean, not my own account, Farm Pond Advisory account, but haven't done that yet. So we won't be reaching the people who haven't. But the data that I wanted to show you, and I'm just going to share my screen for just one little second, was this data. Does everyone see this table? So one of the things that I talked about in May that we do, we have several citizen scientist initiatives, but this one thing has been, testing has been going on from 23, some 20, in the 2022, 23 years. Tom Trainer has really spearheaded that, but I've actively participated and so have many. We trained three new residents this year on this process, and we have four of the Farm Pond Committee members who do it. Anyway, this is secondary depth, so it shows you the depth of clarity that you can see as you lower this disc that's black and white into the water. And the first, as you can see, this is what we were alarmed with. When I came to you in May, I told you that we saw a slight trend for decreasing transparency over the data. There was a complicated chart that I'm not going to show tonight, but we had observed that. And, you know, maybe the average was from six feet, six meters to five meters or something along that. It was trending slowly lower. But this sort of thing, we've never seen before. So from April 10th, which was a fairly average sort of reading, you know, 6.6 meters and through to really July, even July 9th. That's kind of an average. It went into the five-meter depth thing, but then things took a shocking nosedive. And actually, I have a more, sorry, I have a more recent reading. What did I do with my more recent reading? Sorry. We actually have a, an increasing, we did a testing last weekend, and it was further, it was like 0.98 meters. So just a decreasing clarity week on weeks in terms of how much we can see in the, through the water. So the water is pretty green. We were shocked. We didn't know. We don't know why it happens. We just wanted to share with you our alarm and just let everybody in the town know, you know, we, we've been seeing this decreasing. Uh, we just wanted to share with you our alarm and just let everybody in the town know, you know, we, we've been seeing this decreasing. Transparency going on. There, you know, two years ago, we saw a cyanobacteria bloom. A s- big one that was there for, I mean, on one shore for a day, a couple of small ones. Last year, we didn't see any surface blooms. I think we possibly saw a surface bloom for an hour, um, by the yacht club a couple of weeks ago was gone pretty quickly. Uh, we participated in this, um, uh, a collaborative testing effort that, um, what that is, is run out of Worcester. I wouldn't say the numbers, they're shocking, um, that, but our surmise is we've got a lot of excess nutrients in the water. There's a lot of, um, algae or cyanobacteria growth going on. So that's, that's why. And I wrote a document about this and I wanted to know if the Slack board had any questions for me.
Yeah, I got a question. This all happened be- in part because it was. Was, let's say coincidentally with a drought. Recently more severe. Now with the current rains that we've been having, uh, and there was quite a downpour today. Did, or could you take another test to see if the additional water? That must be accumulating in Fire Pond as a result of these rains has changed those numbers to the good.
Um, I think Tom's thought, Tom actually, so we had last, this past Saturday, so not quite a week ago, numbers were worse. Like half, half meter lat worse. I think so, Tom checked it two days ago and it was a tenth of a meter better. So Paul, to answer your question, um, I, I mean, it's possible. I think a whole lot of photosynthesis is going on in our ponds. That's the green. I mean, a whole lot of sun, way more sun than clouds this summer. Yes, you're, I a hundred percent think that's part of it, but there's a lot of nutrients also that are allowing for this to happen. I think there's a cycle going on, warming waters, um, more sun, photosynthesis going on. And perhaps something different going on with sediment and bottom in, you know, that, that's a, a theory still. Um, a, a theory backed up by some data. We've done some phosphorus testing at depth. Um, maybe two, and we just took another set, a sample, so there'll be three samples so far this year. So we're trying to back it up with data. But yes, the drought was not a good thing.
So what would be the path to a solution here?
I don't, I do, there's lots of different paths. I mean, um, I don't, I don't want to talk about solutions yet. I mean, there's many out there. If you're talking about restoring farm ponds, lovely clarity. I mean, it's, um, you have to stop the nutrients from being in the pond. You have to, that the phosphorus, you know, lower. And we may or may not, I mean, if it is some sediment, the warmer climate change, warmer waters reacting with the sediments. You know, that, there's a, there's, there's a bunch of treatments you could do. You can aerate, you can treat it with alum. You can, there's all these, uh, you can introduce foreign bacteria. I mean, there's a bunch of different plans out there. Which we haven't even considered because we're still, as I mentioned in my, a document, kind of a little bit shocked that this is going on. So I don't have solutions yet.
It would have made sense for us to hire a consultant who's in this business to help you.
You said that. So as you all may remember, going to my second item, why I wanted to come here is that. The town or through our lovely, um, legislator, got an earmark. There's an earmark of fifty thousand dollars for a watershed-based plan before our farm pond treaty. This was something we wanted. We wanted a watershed-based plan so we could further go for some grants related to improving the watershed. So that was what we got an earmark, not town money, state money, to do a watershed-based plan. Fortuitously, by luck, that all happened to go at the same time, we've actually been interviewing, um. We've interviewed several, but we've zoned in on one, um, consultant who as part of creating this watershed-based plan, which was on the plan. For eight months ago, paid for by state money, part of that would be, um, in ponds, nutrient loading, loading model. And also, um, in, it's called internal versus external nutrient loading models. So that would be analysis. I don't think we're going to go down, we're just going to get data, um, rather than, I mean, that's what a watershed-based plan is. It's all about models and data. So we'll have expert analysis, but I, I don't think anybody's going to be proposing a whole lot of treatments right off. That's not the first thing. It's still gathering data. And understanding more about why this is happening. Before we go look for a solution.
All right, but the implications were, what you didn't say in your report was that. You don't want people swimming in the pond with this level of, of, uh, transparent.
Yeah, it's, I mean, people have to be aware that it's not as transparent as it, as it, as it has been. So.
There's actually a state standard that says you, when you're at this level, you're not supposed to have a public beach, something like that.
I, I mean, I seen it. I was swimming in it when it was, but the top of it's lovely, but past three feet, you kind of can't see.
I would, I would add a couple of things to that though, uh, Catherine. One, Paul, is we have signs up now. Uh, pretty harshly worded signs, uh, advising the, we, we're not policing the beach, so we're not handcuffing people in the shallow end. And pulling them out of the water, but there are signs warning of the, the risk right now.
Cyanobacteria. Yeah, sorry, Jeff. Yeah.
Those signs are going to be up on Sunday?
Yes, because, uh, coincidentally, uh, I forget whether it's Saturday or Sunday, we're having the triathlon this weekend. And believe it or not, they have, they have three hundred people registered. So they're, uh, they're, they've discussed this with, uh, both this team and Farm Pond Advisory Committee. Yeah, Genie confirmed it Sunday and Genie, they, they've all been involved in this discussion whether they should do that. They're still planning to go ahead with it. I s- I, I, I told Tom Trainer, I should, uh, he should hook me up with some meters because I swam the perimeter twelve times this summer. And, and did it a week ago, you know, a week ago Saturday, I did it for the, uh, they had the fun blow race a week ago with, I don't know. Fifty, fifty swimmers or something.
Well, my concern, Jeff, is for next season.
Yes.
If we're saying right now that we're discouraging. That it may be a risk.
Yes.
What are we going to say in a hot season? If all we've done is, is, uh, got a study underway. Whether it's coming from outside the pond or inside the pond and all that. I mean, that's useful data to have.
Yeah.
But I'm concerned that we have to have a, a solution for our residents that would allow people comfortably to swim in the pond. By like May.
Well, I, I mean.
There's no quick fix. There's really no quick fix. There's absolutely no chemical, no mechanical quick fix.
And we got to go from where we're at. So, you know, I think the sediment she mentions, one thing I'll say from doing all my swimming is the pond is really shallow also. Like on the far corner, I call it Tweed Hill, which is where the tweeds used to live. Thirty yards off from shore, I'm in knee-deep water. So, so the, the pond is dramatically shallower than it's ever been in, in my twenty-five years living here. Including has, having to move the docks like twenty yards further out into the pond because it's too shallow for the snapper swimming to dive.
That's why I'm hoping these rains will increase the volume.
It's all related. I think I have a bunch of questions here. I, uh, Marion, you asked one already, so I think I'm going to let Tom speak first. Where did you go, Tom?
Oh, here I am. Thank, thank, thank you, uh, Jeff, and thank you, Catherine. Very, very good summary and, uh. Thank you, Paul, for a very, uh, important and good question. I would just say that, uh. The, this, this problem has, has taken years to, uh, to, to kind of rear its, its ugly head. So it's going to take a while to dig out of it. The study that Catherine mentions is, is key. We as, we have volunteers have got enough data to allow us to realize that things are changing. But now we need expert help to, uh, guide us on here. And if I could just add one or two points to Catherine's summary. The, the, the table that you see in front of you, the, the last event we, we went out, uh, was, uh, last Saturday. Your Friday, uh, nine sixteen, and at the center of the pond where these measurements are taking place. The reading was one meters or three feet. And Paul, as you mentioned, for bathing beaches, the state, uh, guideline is, is a four feet minimum. For, uh, uh, you know, safe, uh, uh, water sports. So we're, we, we're in a shocking, uh, condition right now. And, uh, you know, it would take a lot more of your meeting here to get into a lot of the fine details. But, uh, definitely Catherine's committee and others of us here in town are very concerned with this and. Trying to, uh, uh, draw attention, uh, to it and, uh, try to find solutions.
Thanks, Tom. I'm going to let Darryl go and then Marion, you'll be next.
Right, uh, the health agent and I had a conference call with. One of the people within the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Who deals with this issue specifically and. This is certain, as you've been told, this is not limited to farm pond. We actually staved this off maybe a little bit longer than some other places. But this is spreading across the northeast, across the northern part of the country. Cat on, I was reading about Ontario having just these kind of issues, same thing. So it's a very complicated problem. And the. I don't know that there'll be a simple solution. I think we're all oriented towards finding so, solutions. And, and there's research going on now for that. And as Catherine mentioned, there's going to be, um, consultants working on that. The posting at Farm Pond, uh, may sound harsh, but I'll say that. This is what Mass D E P recommended, that we post based on the information that we provided to them. And I view it more, unfortunately, it is harsh, but it's matter of fact as well. And, um. You know, I think there are few people sadder than I am about not swimming in the ponds of late. So we just have to. See what we can do in the future. And right now, in terms of posting. Conditions need to change before we can remove those postings.
Great point, Darryl. Marion?
Yeah, both Tom and Darryl, uh, have filled in a lot of information there. Thank you. Uh, but my point is just that, uh, I'm, I'm wondering, you know, uh, whether hiring a consultant. For our town, for our farm pond, uh, makes sense when this is happening all over the northeast. And certainly the state is aware of it. So, uh, I just, uh, want to make sure that we take advantage of. All the research being done by others. And I'm not sure we need to hire a private consultant just for our pond.
If I could answer them, Mary, that every pond is different. Just like treating a human for disease, every pond is different. We have different watersheds that are contributing. Different amount of nutrients. We have different, uh, histories and, uh. The state, the state actually requires in order, order for you to file for, uh, grants. For improvements in a lake to have a state-approved watershed-based plan. So it's kind of the cart before the horse also in terms of why, uh, the Farm Pond Committee sees the need for that watershed. Based plan, so.
I'm not, uh, the plan, I think it's a great, a great thing to do.
Right, we're just, we're lucky that that, we were going to get that plan anyway, and the research that's necessary to write that plan. Is going to help us figure out what's causing this current problem, we hope.
So one final point, maybe? So when. When the general court decided to give us the pond. And the waters of the pond. I had a meeting with the governor. He was asking us about what we were going to do with this pond and he. He looked me in the eye and he said, will Sherburne take care of this pond? And I answered yes, on behalf of the town. We've made a commitment to the state. Give us this pond, we'll take care of it. So I think we should do everything reasonable. To do whatever is necessary. To do it as quickly as possible. To preserve, protect and. Correct. This situation with the pond. So to the extent that you need anything. The extent that you feel the Board of Selectmen can help you. We.
Thank you. Yeah.
We should be there for you.
Thank you. And I, I just want to leave, first of all, that this watershed-based plan, this research is probably going to be taking place over two years. So it's a process. And secondly, um, fixing the problem, like I said, is. We're, our Farm Pond Advisory Committee is well aware of all the different possibilities. Uh, we're not at the stage of coming to you and asking for a fix right now. We, we feel strongly we need more data. Before we want to go dumping alum in our ponds for two years.
Great. Well, uh, thanks for updating us though, uh, Catherine. That was really, and Tom.
Thanks for letting us come.
All right. Next agenda item is Jackie's going to talk to us about early voting hours.
Hi, thank you very much. So, um, yeah, so we are required. By the state to have early voting for two weeks, starting October twenty-second. End of the run all the way through Friday, November fourth. Um, I'm asking that the board allow me to only have early bo-. Board, voting during the week, um, from nine to twelve. Um, because we're a small town, we have to have at least, um, early voting, at least two hours every day. Uh, Monday through Friday. And if we, or it's complicated, it's kind of a gray area. We could be open the whole time. Uh, but we are required at least two hours. So in order to, to do less than the official hours that the office is open. I need the board to allow me to do that. So, uh, turn, turnout for the primary was extremely low. We only had thirty-four people come in and we were open for six days. I had, um. A lot of election workers come in. I had two people every day and it, you know, some days we had four people come in. So I'm thinking this time that, um, unless things get crazy and I need to change it. I'm thinking right now that we will just allow people to early vote, um, in the lobby near the office. And that, um, the office staff, Megan and I and Tony will, will handle it. If it turns out that we're getting thirty people a day or whatever, then I could change, you know, I could change tactics. Uh, and go upstairs to the normal, so up for it off, um, conference room. But right now I don't think it's necessary. We have so far seven hundred and fifty vote-by-mail applications. Um, anyone that hadn't, um, requested a November ballot did receive a little white card in the mail from the Secretary of State's office. Today, the first day that we got more for November and we got about fifty of them today. So we're, we're at about seven hundred and fifty. I'm anticipating that will be a lot higher. Um, I think a lot of people like to vote by mail, so I am not anticipating that the voting, early voting in person will be that busy. And I think that we can handle it. And, um, I think three hours a day is sufficient. I'll still be doing Saturday hours. Guys to allow me to do three hours, Monday through Friday, for the two weeks, Monday through Friday.
Just one comment. The, uh. The primary showed a lot of people who are activists that early voting didn't work. It didn't work because they were voting for candidates who dropped out before Election Day. And so when you voted early and you, you voted for a candidate who is no longer a candidate at Election Day. There's no way to fix that. You're, you're kind of stuck because you've cast your vote, you're out of town, whatever it is. But because of this, that had happened to. But because of this, that had happened to a number of people. And because they're spreading that word, that you may find a fall off of early voting, or at least people holding their, their early voting to closer to Election Day. Just to try to make sure that something doesn't happen before the election that would render their, their early voting ballot no good.
I'll make motion to approve what Jackie's requesting. I just, I don't think we need to talk about it more. I think I trust Jackie and her judgment and I think we should just go with what she recommends.
Implicitly, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Marion.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
And I might as well. Thank you, Jackie.
Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you.
Next person is Sue Kelleher talking about EEOA Formula Grant.
I'm coming. Yeah.
There you are.
Oh, where am I? Oh, there I am.
We can hear you.
Can you see me yet?
No, can't see you, but we can hear you.
You look just like Sean Clayton.
Oh, gosh. Yep. Thank you for this, this time. So every year the state awards cities, what they call the formula grant. And it's based on how many seniors you have in your community that are sixty and over. And they go by the, the census. So for the past ten years, they've gone on the two thousand and ten census. And we, Sherburne gets twelve dollars per senior as according to this formula grant. So we received our annual stipend for nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And that was for the current fiscal year. So I'm asking for approval to accept that money. And then we also received a grant in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. We have a men's group that meets every month and they've been meeting for the past three years. So I put in a grant to Springwell, which was formerly Bay Path Elder Services. It's an aging access point agency. And they approved the grant to cover the men's lunch from October twenty twenty-two through September twenty-three, which will help subsidize the meals. And also for men that don't have transportation or they no longer drive, it will also help cover the cost for transportation. And if we have guest speakers that require stipend, it will cover the cost of that. So I'm also accepting, asking you to accept that grant in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
So could I move to amend the agenda to include two grants and to move acceptance of the two grants and have them applied as specified in the grants?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Paul? And I might as well, and Paul's our expert at accepting money, so he always.
I hate to give money back, so.
So as long as you're in a role, Paul, we have Dave Goldberg next.
Yeah, wonderful. So I, if anyone has any questions, I have a presentation as well, just slides. But we've been working with youth lacrosse for a couple of years now about the idea of putting a rebound wall at, over at Laurel. They have generously agreed to fund the wall. So they have, they voted a few months back to, to fund up to fifty thousand dollars for the wall, which we believe it should come in under that amount. So this is, you know, essentially asking for the town to receive the gift from DS Youth Lacrosse.
So I move to accept the gift and to apply it for the purposes of building a wall.
Second.
Congratulations.
I have, it sounds great to me and I am, as you know, was a lacrosse player in an earlier life. How, how you decide where to put it and, and size wise and all that? Is that just?
Yeah, so we've been working, well, I'll, I'll pull up the presentation, maybe that will help everyone in terms of visualizing it.
Yep. I love it.
For those of you who don't know, the wall essentially helps with rebound skills, so the kids can play with it from both sides. We work with youth lacrosse to figure out what the right width was. So this particular wall that we're looking at comes in six foot section, so we decided to, on six of them. So, and when we worked with DPW to, to figure out where the best place to put the wall was. It may get painted and we talked to youth lacrosse potentially about like maybe a small sign because they might go out and find a, you know, a private sponsor. Yeah, so this is what the wall looks like for those of you who are interested. Like I said, those sections are six feet and the company that, that specializes in this type of wall, they can, they can put as many sections together as they need. So when we looked at, when we looked at where to put it at Laurel, one of the considerations was we obviously didn't want to put it in the, in the way of any of the playing fields. We do orient and move the builds around at times. So we tried to put it in a place that was still accessible to where the kids usually play lacrosse. So, so coaches didn't have kids far away from where they were, you know, practicing. So we came up with this location up here. There's some site work that needs to be done to level it off. But once that's done, we should, we should have a pretty nice place for, for the kids to practice over there. And you'll be able to play with it, play on both sides. So you could actually have we figured up to like sixteen kids potentially using the wall at the same time.
Yeah, that's cool.
Did that answer the question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Do they put a net? I mean, the ball could get away from you too. Do you ever put a net around for, you know, further away from it so that it doesn't go?
Yeah, we, well, hopefully that encourages them to learn how to catch the ball. We thought about.
I know, I know, I know.
We thought about a potential net back here. We haven't decided whether or not that's needed or not. So we're, we're gonna use it for a year or two. And if, if lacrosse comes back and says that they need a net, I'm sure we can find a way of putting one back there.
Yeah, that's cool.
This, this is great because I think the only bounce back wall that the kids use now is the side of the gym at the middle school. That's all.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Get them over there. It like, it helps a lot with skills development. When we talked to you.
Absolutely. Both my girls play lacrosse and this is fantastic. It's something that every lacrosse coach recommends is, is to use something like this. It really develops their skills so well. So this is, this is great.
Yeah. And so, you know, we're very happy for youth lacrosse to, to fund it. So, you know, kudos to them for saving the money and putting it towards it. So it's, it's, it's great. It should be great.
Kudos to you to putting that together.
Yeah, I like it. So we actually, I believe, have a motion and a second and need to vote now. Am I correct?
Yes.
So Marion?
Yes.
George?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I might as well. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, we're on a roll for gifts, Diane. So let's hear from Roach Brothers and Local Town Pages Printing.
Well, I'm excited to tell everybody that the, the Veterans Event Team met two weeks ago. We've decided to move forward with a full fledged event this year. And we've contacted Roach Brothers. They were kind enough to give us a hundred dollar gift card. And Local Town Pages Printing has printed out a hundred postcards for us to mail out to everybody. And the event this year will be open townwide. It won't be like it has last year. We did veterans only. And the year before we just handed out sandwiches. This year it's Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and guest speakers and hopefully the chorus. And so we're looking forward to it. And I just wanted to select one to accept these two gifts from these two companies.
So could I ask you to identify the, the names of the people on the team who've been working on this?
Doug Brody, Mike Kickum, Diana Hope and myself.
Thank them all for putting this together. Much appreciated. So I move approval that we accept the gifts and apply it for the purposes stated.
And I second.
All right, Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am, I as well. And I thank you also, Diane. Now we're at Select Board Reports, a routine business. Does anyone on the Select Board have a report?
I have one. I agreed to sit on the union negotiation contract with the teachers. Tuesday, so we're, we're kicking it off here soon, so.
Thank you for doing that. It's Amanda, I think it was Amanda that wrote to me initially.
Yeah, Amanda Brown and I work, Kate Potter and Lynn Cal, we're on the Regional School Committee are doing it again as well, who I know. And, and like I said, I did it the last time, so it'll help bring that experience. So hopefully we can get it done quickly and not drag it out too long.
Thank you.
Guy for the job.
Yeah, yeah, but we really appreciate it because you had a lot going on. So I, I just want to thank you personally for, for being willing to devote time to that.
No problem.
All right, any other Select Board reports?
Oh, you told me to bring up under Selectment Reports, the idea of executive session.
Yeah, and this is for the town community center, correct? Now, you told us, if I recall, that you're gonna be away or unavailable on the eighth, I think you said.
Yes, son's getting married. Yeah.
We were, I was thinking if you invited us all to the wedding, we would solve two problems with one. So if we, if we meet on the eighth, so we would need you to be there, I think, six rather. Yeah, we would need you to be there. So are you proposing that we do it, have a special executive session after that?
Well, that was Diane's thought that we have in like an early morning or it's only gonna take fifteen or twenty minutes. Literally, we get almost everything solved except for a couple of big issues that we need to talk about. So.
Yeah, I think it's good that we know the issues too.
Yeah, it could be before or after the eighth.
I can't do anything on the eighth.
So I don't know why.
I keep, it's because I keep screwing up and saying.
Sorry. It could be before, it would have to be after the sixth, I guess. Yeah.
But I'm hoping some other day of, of the week other than I'm, I'm basically moving to New York for three days to this wedding. So.
I can do most mornings. I can't do, I typically can't do Tuesday mornings. I just have my weekly call with my company on Tuesday mornings that I can't miss, so.
I mean, anything daytime's difficult for me. I can do like a nut lunchtime. I mean, I got a full time job. It's hard. I can do like, you know, noon or something like that some days. I have, I can make a lot of concessions after work. There's no question about it. I can squeeze something in, so.
We could do it earlier. So we can coordinate calendars, but do you want to try and pick a date now or have Diane coordinate with us?
Um, I, excuse me for just a minute. I did reach out to Steven Si and I reached out to Heather. Steven is available most evenings at quarter of seven, except for October fifth, sixth, eighteenth and the twentieth. He's not available those nights. And Heather White, the only night she's not available is Tuesday, the September twenty-seventh. But outside of that, she's pretty open for nighttimes.
So how do people look for the twelfth of October? It's a Wednesday night. If we met at say seven PM on the twelfth of October for half an hour?
Sure.
I could do.
Can we do seven thirty? And my daughter has a lacrosse game. I mean.
Of course.
Works for me.
Is that okay for you, Paul? Because that way, we need to do it by the end of the month, I think you said. So that way, you know, if we have to do a revision or something, it's not the twenty-eighth when we're doing it. So. Okay, that's why I picked the twelfth. So we'll do.
Seven thirty?
Seven thirty on the October twelfth.
All right. And before we leave this subject, there, there may be, I see Mike, Mike Terry is not here tonight, but maybe Chris can help. There is another issue that we may have to have in executive session.
Yeah, yeah.
Regarding, yeah, the, the well proposed well test on Hunting Lane. So.
Can you coordinate and see if he could do it, if the twelfth could work for him too? You think, Marion?
Yes, I can.
We're gonna have one. We might as well do both at the same time if we have.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And what about mediation executive session?
That was, that was gonna be on the sixth.
I can't be there for that.
Oh, so maybe that could be, it'll be a full meeting with three executive session items, but that's okay with me. I can do that.
Which item was this, Paul?
Library.
Oh. The update, that's right. So why don't we do all three on the twelfth?
That works.
You okay with that, Paul?
Yep.
As long as we start later, then I can find later in the evening. It's just.
And we'd be very disruptive.
Fridays are like our field hockey nights.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So we're gonna do three executive sessions, the library mediation. Remind me what they all are. We're gonna do the Community Center Foundation. And what's the other one? The Barsky?
Yeah. A pump test.
Yeah. All right. Sounds like a plan. Any, any other executive or Select Board reports? All right.
Communicate with Mike about that.
Yeah, yeah, please. All right, we're off to executive session. We've already read the item. I deem that we do need to discuss this subject in executive session. So I need a second and a roll call vote.
Second.
Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
All right. So that's good. I'm gonna turn recording off.